Committee of the Whole Meeting for August 16, 2016. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Hammer?
Here.
Carbinero?
Here.
Daney? Absent. Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have this evening on our Committee of the Whole Meeting is under Planning and Zoning. Typically Chairman Ranky. I've requested, due to a conflict of interest, that Chairman Hopkins chair the first item under the Planning and Zoning Agenda this evening for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. I'm going to chair one item on this committee. The petitioner is requesting an annexation, rezoning, the North Lot, the Cell Tower upon annexation from the ER1 Estate Residential to the B3 Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District in a special use for motor home sales and major repairs, automotive and truck mechanical and body repairs, storage of vehicles associated with the use of this property, and a site plan review. The Plan Commission received the application and conducted a public hearing at their meeting on July 14, 2016. The Plan Commission recommended approval of the subject to the conditions and findings of facts outlined in the staff report. Does Jeff care to comment at all, anything?
I think you pretty much summed it up. In a nutshell, we're annexing a small piece of property that's north of a property that's already in the village, and that's this parcel, which will bring us up to the Streamwood boundary. And then the site plan, which is, this is the Old Motor Homes Unlimited property. The petitioner will renovate two buildings on the property into auto repair, auto service, auto bodywork. And then the primary use of the rest of the property will be stormwater detention for the development that he has to the west, which is Elgin Toyota dealership, which you see up there. And then also, um, storage of his vehicles that will be stor-- and as his attorney has stated, storage of vehicles owned by the, uh, the owner of the Toyota dealer. So they will store extra cars, trucks, that type of thing that they'll have. It went through the Plan Commission. They recommended approval. The one other thing they did is the landscape plan. The one, on the north end of the property, you'll have some stockpiling of prop-- material that'll come out of this big detention basin. And the one thing that both the Village of Streamwood and the Village of Bartlett will get is the petitioner will connect to the water system through these, this easement that'll be on the east side. On to the south side of the village, it'll be an interconnect between the two communities. It'll be oversized. We'll have a shared agreement with the petitioner that will allow for the oversizing. We'll pay for the oversizing with the Village of Streamwood. And then we'll have our emergency water connection with Streamwood on the north end. And that's the sum and substance of it. The petitioner and his project manager, his attorney, Peter Bezos, and his project manager, Mike Anderson. Any questions of them?
I first want to say thank you to the petitioner for cleaning up the property and developing it. I drive on Lake Street that way quite a bit, and it's been rundown for quite a while, so I thank the petitioner for developing the property, so. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have a question. Dan, last time that we discussed this, um, because this is going to be our emergency hookup to Jawa, are we going to need any type of pumping or transmission to, to connect this water?
Right now, we're talking with Streamwood. We're just looking to make the connection.
Okay.
Um, we're still looking at both models to see how, pressure-wise, how that would work. We may in the future have to come back and put a pump station, be able to feed either direction. But right now, getting the connection is, is the key point, and we can always work with Streamwood to put in that pump station if we determine that's necessary later.
It's not needed at this time.
At this time, no.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll forward this on to the Village Board.
Yep, next meeting.
It'll get, thank you, but it's, we will do, we have to do a public hearing on the annexation agreement at the Village Board and publish, and then the rest of it will follow with an ordinance for the zoning, annexation, and an annexation agreement.
So as soon as possible, then.
Well, we, yes, I mean, if what Trustee Hopkins said would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. That is it for our substitute planning and zoning gentleman. Next, Chairman Ranky for the next item on our planning and zoning agenda.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Trustee Hopkins. I like the record to reflect that I took no part in that discussion, so if you could put that in the minutes, I would really appreciate it. Um, so the remaining item we have for planning and zoning this evening is the downtown TOD plan. So with that, I, I know we've got a number of folks here, and I'm eager to hear from all of you. So why don't I turn this over to, to Jim? Do you want to, you want to spearhead this discussion?
I, yeah, will. Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is, again, the TOD plan. The last time you saw that, we had Christine Carlyle, who's with us here from Solomon Co- Co- Benz, and Cindy Fish, the transportation plan, planner, is here. They gave you a presentation which, which is in, which is on board up on the screen. And since that meeting, the planning and, uh, since the planning and zoning committee meeting, it was forwarded on to a special combined public hearing with the very three commissions, our EDC, our zoning board, and our Plan Commission on July 14. The presentation, again, was made in the public hearing. The combined commissions recommended in favor of the TOD plan to the Village Board. The minutes and the draft TOD plan are here. Christine and Cindy are here to answer questions. I don't know if you want to go through the same presentation. We've seen it once before, but if you have any questions, every, they're all, we're all here to answer questions. Roberta Grill is also here, um, from our, uh, Assistant Director and CD, and George Cozio, who you heard before, he was on the Steering Committee, and will try to answer any questions you have.
Okay, well, I, I have a, I have a number of questions. Ms., Ms. Carlyle, so looking at page 30 of the, the transcript, um, you stated that the economic development associated with commuters is very minimal for the town itself. And I, and I think that's one of the discussions that we've had in various forums here, is that, you know, we, we want to see that the commuters are, are a, a source of economic development for us. And yet, at the same time, we're kind of puzzled because we can't keep the coffee shop and the, and the train station thriving. So it, it seems to me that you put your finger on, on that issue, and I wonder if you could elaborate for us, this notion that maybe the commuters aren't doing what we think that they would do.
Bartlett is not uncommon for many of the commuter stations. You have people who are in a hurry to get home, and they tend to get to their car and try to get home. They have other commitments. Um, we've, we've been studying the, these trans, these, uh, train stations in a variety of places. Our economic analyst, Goodman Williams Associates, they, they also have a lot of data that the expenditures are not high with the, the commuters. It's just tends to be the trend. I mean, the, the thing is, you're going to have more people that are from your community using, uh, your downtown, and that's key, is to make this a place where people want to come, that they can see that there's a lot of, you know, activity, um, that there are gathering places, there are, you know, places where they might want to grab that cup of coffee, get some, you know, uh, food and drink. Um, and those tend to be, right now, where most of the economic development is today in, in, in the kind of food and beverage side of things. And, yeah, I think there's a full report that was done by Goodman Williams as part of the plan, um, and, you know, we can go through that and point out some other parts of it. I don't have it with me right now, but I'm happy to, to give you more information and stay with that if you don't have it.
Does anybody else have, that answered a number of my questions?
Yeah, I had, I had a question about, um, there seemed to be a little bit of concern about eliminating parking spaces. And I think, the more I read into that, and the more I delve into this plan, it's kind of a red herring complaint because these people that are parking and jumping on the train aren't really supporting the downtown anyway. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, there, there's not a lot of evidence that you're getting retail sales out of them. But at the same time, having some convenience to the train station that's within walkable areas is what we looked at. So we aren't eliminating any of the parking spaces, we're moving them.
Moving them.
To, to allow for prime real estate to be developed that will add more value to the downtown in terms of residential and some retail.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was interesting that, okay, the metro parking is 85% occupied today, but by 2040, we're looking at needing an additional, what, like 200, uh, yeah, additional 150 to 200 parking spaces and the discussion of the, discussion of the parking structure and--
Yeah, vertical.
Yeah, vertical. Uh, and that's, uh, that's interesting. That has its own set of challenges, obviously. But we would need something like that if we're going to increase our residential density downtown.
That's correct. In terms of, that's, the, it's not a tremendous amount of use, but it will add critical mass and in terms of people that are living here that will then support your neighborhood serving retail. Um, and you can see that all the, the phasing of the parking was done in, in sequence, that you, if you, if there's some movement of the parking, it's moved somewhere else. We've, there's a lot of land that Metro owns right now, north of the Senior Flexonics site, and that has been identified as a potential, uh, parking area.
And it, and I like, I like the incremental approach because that's, I mean, in my experience, that's how development works. You can't create a, a plan and then everything is done right away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a strong incrementalist in terms of, like, you, you, it is a sequence issue, and that's, you're going to get the most reward out of doing that, and it'll be thoughtful decisions, each one of them.
And I, and I know that they tried to pin you down as to whether there was a particular project, a keystone, I think was the, the word that was used. And you did, you did kind of give on that one. Uh, and you did talk about Bartlett Plaza because a representative from, I think it was CBRE was there. And he, and he said, "Yeah, we're, we're interested in, in doing that." So, in, in your mind, how does that spur all the other development? How is that our, our keystone, even though it's not really?
It, it is in terms of the approach to the downtown and sending a message that there's new development taking place. And to be able to fill what has been a vacant, um, property for a while, that's, that's a really key component to sort of setting the, a new, um, message for the, for the village. Getting, that would be a prime, uh, site for residential as well. You have a, a willing, um, property owner who's interested in that, you, they're represented by a real estate brokerage firm, so I think that there's a lot of good story to go with that. Um, and there's a lot of excess land, and especially in the parking area, it's not fully utilized as well. So there, there could be many different, you know, benefits to that particular property. And, uh, so it, it would have a, a spinoff effect and a catalyst for downtown. The other properties, you're probably going to have some infrastructure to look at. There's some movement of the, of some parking spaces. There's other sequential things that need to be looked at.
Just, I think the one thing that struck me when I go through this, and this is the probably, I don't know, the third or fourth time we've, or sec-- at least second or third time we've looked through the TOD, is, is the pliability of the plan itself. You know, you can start at one point and actually get a starting point and, um, work your way into what the, what the residents are, are actually, um, supporting, I guess. So I think it, I think it's a, a great, there's a lot of great ideas in, in the plan.
I wish we would have had this when we voted on the TIF.
Well, you know, you know what? That's, that's a very good point.
And I know that there was extensive discussion of the TIF.
And part of the problem that we had was there was no plan.
Right, right. And the reason why we have it is because of the grant, so. Right, right.
So I guess that's a good question. How important is the TIF to this plan?
Um, from the development community's point of view, it's very important. You've got, you know, you compete with other communities in terms of bringing developers in. They're going to be looking at certain, um, you know, price points in terms of, uh, infrastructure, um, things that are, that need to be done as part of preparing for, uh, development. So a TIF can really help in, in making sure it pencils out, which is really the, looking at the pro forma for the property. And so it's, it's got a lot of, you know, benefits to probably starting the, the process sooner and, and bringing in, uh, some developers and, and having some competitive edge to your neighboring communities.
Thank you.
The, uh, super block in this, you know, concept plan here, how many times have you seen that happen in a village, um, create a, a super block?
Well, there was a tendency in the, in the 1960s to think about, you know, these really large tracts of land and to not recognize that there was a, an existing block pattern. So, um, especially with a shopping center like that, it took up a lot of land, so it was cutting off streets. Uh, but it does, uh, there, there, it limits your circulation then in terms of, and that's what we saw, is that if you start to, um, have some through streets in there, you have multiple routes to get from point A to B. You're not just relying on Main Street and, and having to just kind of circle around all the way to Prospect and come back through. So, um, it, it, it's, it's a big opportunity to sort of make a, a downtown scale in street and block, um, and it'll be a hybrid of, you know, having your shopping center plus new development that can add a, a more walkable quality to the downtown, which is what everyone is looking for these days, and, and it'll provide some greater, um, parcels for development and access to them.
I think breaking up that super block is going to be really scary for a lot of people.
Yeah.
I, I think it, I think it is going to be scary, but, you know, if we're committed to changing the downtown--
Something's got to get.
Something's got to get, right? We can't keep everything the same and change it all.
Keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a miracle business to pop in.
This area was a, was a formerly industrial zone, so it had a different structure to it.
Just to get my car fixed down there, yeah.
So I think you have to think about, you know, as you move towards more of that, you know, walkable downtown, you, you're going to have to do some things to help, um, make that happen. But it, it can be incremental, again. You don't have to think about, you know, every road being done simultaneously. It, it, each road piece could be done with development, associated development.
Well, having somewhat of a vested interest in the Bartlett Plaza, uh, region, I, I'm a little, well, I'm, I'm concerned, I guess, or just curious of, of how we've come to the determination that, that we need so much rental apartments and rental buildings in Bartlett that, that we would be tearing down the shopping center and replacing that with a, with a rental apartments. What did you base that findings on? From which cities or how did this come about that you're saying we just don't have enough for our population, uh, for Bartlett's population in general? We don't have enough apartment buildings?
Well, we, we did have a, a study that looked at, and that was the Goodman Williams analysis of your demographics, and we're finding that in many communities is that there are, they're not starter properties anymore. There's no place for empty nesters to, to go, people who want to stay in the community. Um, and you, you right now have, I think, 98% or maybe 99%, um, you know, occupancy in your current, um, apartment rentals. So there is a demand, there's demand regionally for, for that as well. Um, I think it, look, you need to look at the, the, the type of, of development and, you know, ensuring that there's, you know, high quality coming in, and so those are some of the issues that every community faces. But there is a, there is a big demand today for apartments, and it's based on, you know, price points and, and people getting, you know, starter, uh, properties as well. So it, and we are beginning to see some condos come back as well, um, and so that, that is happening, so that there, it's not just looking at, you know, if, you know, today it's probably apartments, but in the future it could be condos too.
Okay. How important are the bike recommendations that you made in this plan?
Well, um, I, I worked and teamed with Cindy Fish. She is our transportation expert. I can tell you from the, the people's side, it was very important. We had a lot of, you know, people showing up at the meetings to make sure that we had those bike recommendations, that downtown was bikable, that you could get there as a destination. Um, and so, uh, part of what we were looking at is how do you, you know, get through the downtown on a bicycle and ensuring that it's a safe route. Cindy, if you're wel-- you're welcome to add any comment if you want to.
I think we should give a plug to, um, Terry Wood, who also was very active on our group and helped us with come up with these recommendations, but, um, Christine is, Christine is right that that was, they're a very important, um, access into the downtown, um, as a way of not needing your, your vehicle, particularly with commuters.
Yeah. You see that in a lot of communities now. You go into downtown Naperville and they've got a bike lane that's heading downtown, because they don't have room for parking down there. There's too many restaurants, and if you've ever tried to park in Naperville, downtown Naperville on a Friday after, Friday evening, good luck. So they want people biking.
I have a question for Chief Williams. Another one is establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit on all roadways in downtown Bartlett on Oak and Main. Right now, I think it's 30 miles an hour. How, do you see that happening?
That's your decision. We'll enforce it if the board passes it. So when, when a time comes and it seems beneficial, we can, we can consider that and put an ordinance out. We can draft that on your behalf.
Do you guys write a lot of tickets on Main and Oak?
Right there at that intersection, Main and Oak, I'm going to say, no, we do not write a lot of tickets right at that intersection.
We included that, though, just to change the feel of when you come in to the downtown. It should be marked a slower speed, and it should be multimodal, it should be complete streets. You know, we want to change it into a downtown feel and not just a bypass route.
Well, I, I think, I think that's one of the benefits of the, of the complete streets model is, like, over by the Elgin City Hall, they have, they have, you know, it's, it's downtown Elgin, but they have that bike lane, and it tends to kind of, you know, maybe squeeze you together, but also slow you down because you got that, that marking on the pavement and the possibility of vehi-- of, of bicycles. So I think that is a, it's a good opportunity, too.
You have a, a great bike shop here, and Terry's active with that, and I know you're having a race or some kind of a bike event coming up.
Stayin' classic, yeah. You guys are writing in it, right?
It'd be fantastic.
So I, I do have another question about, uh, one of these, uh, maps or drawings that you have here, just out of curiosity, where it's listing Main Street and Devon, and you make comment on these of new commercial, new commercial. You know, as I understand it, at the corner would be, the CVS would be an existing building, and then you have a bank and other buildings to the, to the north of it. I don't see how you're coming up with new commercial property right there.
Yeah. There, there is an opportunity for some infill in some of those locations. You've got a lot of space.
Are you, are you talking about tearing down the bank or the bank would, or CVS or something of that nature?
No, we're talking about, um, eliminating some of the parking spaces through there to create more of a street wall, um, for new commercial.
I can't imagine.
And then finding other parking behind it and being more efficient in your parking layouts. So, um, that you park behind the buildings and that you have more of a frontage in the front that creates that walkable zone. And these are, again, are, you know, as the opportunities present themselves, to think about it, and, um, but it's, having a, a sea of parking in front of your buildings doesn't create a sort of walkable environment. So anything that can gets pulled to the, more to the streetscape side of things, it'll, it'll help to add that continuity along Main Street as well.
Well, I'm just, since I drive this every day, I mean, there's, there's not that much distance between the bank and CVS where you, where this little rectangular area would be referencing. And so I'm looking at it thinking, well, I don't know what you could put there, but it couldn't be much as far as a new commercial development. And if you go to the north of it, then you're talking about either taking out, uh, a dental office or a physician's office and tearing those down and expanding those out as well. I'm, I'm guessing that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, building up.
Huh?
But these, again, are future when the demand is there. It's not necessarily--
They're set clear back off the road now, so that's the idea.
The dental offices, yeah.
And so is the cleaners and--
Well, yeah, that's all--
And there's a lot of gaps in between there.
Yeah, there are some as you're going into the rental housing back there.
You're not going to build it yet, Mike.
I know that. I absolutely know that, but I'm just wanting to, people to realize, this isn't as clean cut as everybody wants to make it sound. Yeah, there, there's definitely some--
It's a vision.
But just--
How much room does a chiropractor's office need? You know, I think we do, we'll just squeeze it in the corner next to the pizza place and the dry cleaners and--
Well, I think that--
I don't need to have comments about my profession, Vince. Thank you very much.
I, I, but I think you have a very good point, and, and development operates in, in very subtle ways, and, and so if we start to see a change in the downtown, then suddenly as a developer, it makes sense for me to buy that strip mall and tear it down, and as President Wallace indicated, maybe build up. So, yeah, then we've got some infill, maybe some, some juggling parking spaces, but over time and, you know, decades, I, you and I will both be retired by that time.
Right.
You know, uh, we, we may see the, the sea change that we all wanted so badly for, for downtown.
I certainly am not opposed to it. I would have said lots more against it from the very get-go if that was the case, but I just think that there's more to it than meets the eye. And I'm concerned about some of the allocation of commercial properties and things of that nature, but I just don't see the space for it. But, um, you know, that can be developed, I suppose, over time.
So is that it for questions and comments then, or do you have any more? Well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work on this. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
We are looking forward to be forwarded on for a, a vote on a resolution accepting, sorry.
I was getting, I was getting there. I was getting there. So, uh, yeah, I'm assuming that everybody agrees that we'll forward this on, uh, to the Village Board then. Yes. No objections?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, that's all I have for planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have this evening is, um, under the Finance Committee, and it is Chairman Daney, who had to excuse himself, uh, for understandable circumstances. So, um, I will turn it over to our Treasurer for a brief explanation, if you don't mind, or our Village Administrator for the senior utility tax rebate.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Looking forward to seeing you guys on the bike here in September, so. All right.
A couple months ago, we were asked to have a discussion regarding the senior utility tax rebate. Um, I'll just give the Board a brief history of that rebate. We had reduced the electric and gas utility tax by a combined $1 million, with cuts of $300,000 in 2014 and $700,000 in 2015, uh, with the last reduction going into effect in May 1 of 2016. During the implementation of the utility taxes in 2012, the Board did establish a $30 senior citizen utility tax rebate. Um, at that time, we estimated a single-family household would pay $85 per year. Um, in total, um, our, these utility taxes have been cut by 58% from the original amounts. The annual expense for the senior rebates is budgeted at $59,000. So that's just a brief history of how we got to a senior utility tax rebate. Staff did offer, uh, two options for the Board to consider if it would like, would be one, completely eliminating the senior rebate or reducing that rebate by a similar percentage to the reduction in both of the utility taxes. Uh, so with that, again, it's a brief history of our, um, senior utility tax rebate, and I'll throw it out there for any feedback or discussion that the Board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Um, currently, how does a senior go about getting a rebate?
Uh, back in 2012, they filled out, um, an application, and we kept that application in file, and we cross-referenced-- we cross-referenced our water billing database. And that is how we send out those checks annually each year by verifying who's still in that database. And if a new resident or somebody turns of age, they can come in, fill out the application, and they'll be eligible for that rebate.
So is it possible for a senior not to even use $30 in a tax and still get a $30 credit?
Yes.
Is this something that the seniors have come to count on through the village?
We don't get a lot of feedback from the seniors just because we automatically really just send out the checks. Sure they like them.
How much difficulty, manpower, does it take to prorate it on the percentage?
Well, we cut about 2,000 checks a year annually. You know, we're almost at $60,000 in an expense. We start gearing up in May and then sending out these checks in June. So it does take some time and effort for staff to do it.
But is it complicated to go bill by bill and use the percentage on what they would be receiving versus the $30 flat?
Oh, I would recommend just having a flat fee like we have before.
So we're considering cutting, one of the options is to consider cutting the rebate, the senior rebate of $30 by 58%, which is $17.
Well, yeah, that was just a recommendation.
So eliminate it, reduce the amount, or keep it the same?
Stay, leave it alone.
Me, too.
Me, too.
It's 30 bucks.
And I always look at it.
We blow more money in the city.
I look at it from a manpower standpoint. I mean, are we spending two salaries to send these checks back to folks? So it's really not 59,000 in expense, it's really 120?
No, it's a group effort. I mean, when you look at having to review the water billing database, create a database report, accounts payable has to enter that into the accounts payable system, cut all those checks. And then we have the process of reconciling our bank statements each month, tracking all those checks. And there are, you know, inevitably phone calls that come in. Where's my check? The check was lost in the mail, you know, just things like that. So collectively, for, you know, about six weeks, it's a fair amount of work for the finance department.
But we're used to doing it the way it is right now.
Yes.
I would just recommend leaving it alone. Right now, that would be my suggestion just because, yeah, it's changed the process. You're going to have more calls and more questions. And understandably, you could potentially, with the fee that we have right now, be paying a portion of their actual bill because the rebate's higher than what they would have gotten taxed on. But my suggestion would be just to leave it. Anybody else?
No, it's not really part of the discussion. But what's the likelihood of us in next year's budget eliminating the gas tax?
That's a policy decision.
It's one way to save on the people power is to eliminate the utility taxes altogether. That would be the ideal answer.
And then you have no more rebate, no more tax.
Less manpower.
That would be a good number to, that's actually something that you can put, figure out the numbers, right? You could say, okay, what amount of manpower are we using for this? If we eliminated it completely, how much would we save, right? Because that's important. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of hours. You take that and you add it to the $59,000 expense that we're sending out.
When we implemented, though, in 2012, we didn't increase staff or we just dialed that into our daily, well, not daily, but our annual routine of doing this. So.
Okay, okay. Again, I suggest we leave it and then come budget time. It's a good topic of discussion. Everybody good with that?
Okay.
All right. And that is it for, I'll take off my Chairman Daney's finance cap. Next item we have under the committee whole is Public Works Committee Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda is the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District. And we've discussed this previously. And I think I can let staff maybe take off where we left off last time. That'd be great.
I think that's Brian.
Okay. Brian.
Trustee Hopkins asked that I review a statute that actually when we met with the representative from the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, I cited to that statute and said, how about this? And looked at me with a blank stare and was not familiar with it. We did not hear from them. That being said, the statute in question, which is a portion of the Mosquito Abatement District Act, provides that if mosquito abatement services, if a municipality budgets for and provides mosquito abatement services and levies within its general tax levy, a tax to fund those mosquito abatement services, and if the municipality, in this case, the Village of Bartlett, lies wholly or partially within a mosquito abatement district, in this case, the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, that also levies a district tax. So in this case, in Cook County, the Cook County portion of the Village of Bartlett lies in the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, it levies a tax for mosquito abatement services. This is a little different, or maybe it was contemplated, maybe it wasn't. But we happen to lie in three counties. There is no mosquito abatement district in DuPage. So the village contracts with Clark Mosquito Service. They charge about $72,000 a year. And we budget for that. We don't have a specific line item levy for that, but it's in the general levy, which then gets levied against the properties in Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties that are in the village. So trustee Hopkins' position is, or has stated that the people in Cook County are paying their tax on their tax bill to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District and then at least a proportionate share of this 72,000 that really is pays for mosquito abatement services only in DuPage, but it's spread out among the whole, you know, among the whole village. So the county clerk, trustee Hopkins apparently had talked to them, and they calculated that there are roughly 8,300 taxpayers in DuPage County, portion of the village, and roughly 5,785 taxpayers in Cook County. And that from the real estate taxes collected on properties on those 5,785 properties in Bartlett that are in Cook County, that Cook County extended $44,000, it's actually 44,000, oh, zero, eight, five, to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District for tax year 2014. The statute says that in that instance, that the village should pay monies to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District. Now, we didn't levy an amount also for mosquito abatement services. I mean, I don't think the statute fit clear on that point. If we had, then it would be the 44,000 plus the 72,000. So 116,000. So in this case, we have only levied the 72. The statute talks about the mosquito, we pay the 44,000, it would work, to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, and they in turn are supposed to abate the taxes. I don't know what kind of pushback there would be. I've tried to call the, I think some of this will turn on how easily it can be done. Prelimarily, the people I've talked to in the clerk's office thought that they would, it may have to do the calculation manually. Because to abate it across their whole district, you'd take the 44 divided by the whole district. That's all the people in unincorporated Cook County, in their district, and other towns. That wouldn't get the Bartlett folk the full amount that they had been taxed. So my question to the county clerk's office is, can they spot abate taxes? Can they pick by pin by pin how much each paid and calculate that? Initially, the person I spoke to, he had to talk to the computer programmer. I don't know if that's been done yet. Trustee Hopkins may have talked to them because he was familiar with the issue. So I have, I'm supposed to hear from the manager of the tax extension and maps department, Tonia Anthoffer, hopefully tomorrow, and their in-house attorney. And I think what he's saying is they have to talk to their computer program to see how easily that if the county clerk can assist that taxing district. The burden really falls on the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District under the statute. But if there, I believe, a fair amount of expense or legal fees, they're going to be resistant. And I'm reluctant to just say write a check for $44,000 without a corresponding assurance that some of our residents will get that money back in the form of a future abatement. They're not going to probably write checks. It's more likely going to be an abatement as to a future tax year, which would reduce their bill for that year on a go-forward basis. So I'm still waiting to hear some more information. The point of my memo before was, you know, I know what the statute says. There's a strong argument that it applies in this situation. But what will the pushback be and what will the real net result be? You know, it's going to be on the average of $9, I think, a taxpayer in Bartlett that would get abated. What is the cost of accomplishing that? I don't know. I think that, you know, be the telltale in terms of whether, how practical this is. I realize what the statute says appears to be mandatory in some respects, but I don't know if the cooperation will get from the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District. And I think that will in turn, in large part, on how much assistance they can get from the Cook County Clerk's Office. If there's a way of reprogramming it, the, through the county clerk's office, and it's not a great expense to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, I think that this may be possible and work.
Well, I think the burden is on Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, not us. We need to comply with this law. We've been in violation for it for many years, and we need to comply. We need to write them a check, like the statute says, and that's what needs to happen. And the Northwest Mosquito Abatement's legal team can deal with it from there. But it doesn't, the statute doesn't lay out that we need to do their legal work for them. We need to write them a check. And I think that's what we need to do. We need to follow the law.
Well, I think there's some room for interpretation. If we had been abating the 116,000, which is the 72 that we've spread out over three counties, and also the 44,000, then I think it falls within the four corners of the statute. And we are sitting on that extra $44,000 at this point. We're not. So that's going to have to come from other sources. And I think that it's a fair reading that we should have to do that. But it's not, I don't believe, crystal clear on that point.
Well, I think we should have budgeted for the mosquito payment for Northwest Mosquito Abatement. It should have been in our budget. It should have been in our budget for 20 years. And it hasn't been.
Well, there's all kinds of.
And I understand that it's not, but we need to comply with the law. And it's simple. It really is. And if they're not returning your phone calls, that's a serious problem. You know, they have lawyers, too.
If they're not returning the phone calls, how confident are you that they're going to, with the number of residents and the amount of money we're talking about here, how confident are you that they're going to mess with it for the next 10 years? And it's not worth the loss of.
We need to comply with.
I would suggest that we, as a board, agree to wait until the things that you find out. It sounds like there's a lot of things that we're missing. And we're waiting for calls back on several different items, correct?
Right now.
The mechanism?
From the Cook County Clerk's Office. I expect to hear from them tomorrow. Unfortunately, they weren't in.
Okay.
And they started the process, you know. The person that I first had was not the right person. I know the former person was Bill Vassalopoulos. I talked to the director. That person is actually not in the office, the director. And this is the replacement for Vassalopoulos. So I was spinning my wheels a little bit, truth be told. We really need the nuts and bolts, the people who are in talking to the computer programmers to see what they can do.
And that would essentially let us know what action we would need to take, correct, trustee Hopkins?
Well, I just think from a practical standpoint, that'll, I mean, trustee Hopkins makes a good point. I think there's a fair reading of the statute. We just do it. We write the check. But I'm reluctant to just say write the check if we're not going to, if it doesn't get abated.
Yeah. I would rather have a couple more answers first.
Right. And that's why I'm kind of surprised we're talking about this, even at the committee level, if we're still waiting for the answers. But at the same time, we need some finality here. So we need to get this thing done. I agree with trustee Hopkins. If the statute applies, and it's an Illinois statute, and it's in, yeah, so it may not necessarily be as clear as we want it. But if it applies, we better comply with it, unless they're refusing.
It wouldn't be the first time they have a statute in Illinois where they don't have a mechanism to back it up.
Absolutely.
And they don't have a mechanism to back this up.
Right.
To me, if we write them a check and we may never ever see anything.
Right.
And there's a good chance of that. Every year we'd be writing them that check and we would never see anything, or our residents wouldn't see anything.
Right. And so then what is the resolution that everybody on the Cook County side, you know, gets their class action attorney and sues?
Let's not give anybody any suggestions.
Yeah, no, 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 no. But I mean, well, that would be if the mosquito abatement district didn't abate the taxes. That would be the appropriate remedy. But that gets real hairy. But it sounds like we're, this isn't really a board issue at this point. It sounds like this is a lawyer-to-lawyer issue.
Yeah, I agree. I think that what we should do at this point is have, advise our council to get more information, solid information, and then determine whether or not we're going to pay this extra fund.
We can, yeah, move, get that information and then put that in the form of a bill on the, you know, on a bills list or whatever, so that it's just there when we have that.
And for our residents, they require the mosquito abatement, provide us with some kind of mechanism that they're going to start utilizing. That would be our end goal, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Clear as mud?
Yeah, no, I understand.
All right. And the last, we finished. Any other questions? Any concerns with the board?
You got one more item there.
Got one more item, exactly. So if there's none, then we'll move on to the sewer rates study. And once again, I can turn this over to staff and they can make comments about it if you like.
Dan, in light of.
We refer to the board and take a vote to see if we want it.
Well, okay, we can do a straw vote. Is that what you're suggesting?
I think I would ask Dan to give us some insight into the.
I just asked him, I think.
EPA information that just came up. But this is pretty new stuff, right? So it might have a decision, or it might, it'll help us to understand why this is not the right time to be doing this, so.
Right. With our new NPDS permit that came out in October, our Devon excess flow facility is struggling to meet those new limits. And we've been working with the EPA to come up with a solution to that. And at this point, it might make sense to wait until we know exactly where we're headed with that, because there will likely. until we know exactly where we're headed with that, because there will likely be capital improvements involved with that. So I'd hate to go through a rate study and then add a capital program, and after that, I'd rather have that information so we could factor that in when we're looking at a rate study. So it might make more sense to wait. Um, and we have to respond fairly soon, so we're talking about in the next month, uh, that we have to respond back to EPA, so at that point, we'd have a better idea, hopefully, if they accept our plan and we move forward from there.
And just to elaborate, um, given the planning and information and the significant expense that could be involved, um, in this strictly Cook County issue, um, that's ahead of us, I think it, it's a good notion that this, uh, suggested conversation be postponed until we find out what that is that we're dealing with, and I would love to take a straw poll and push this out.
I got a few questions for Dan. What kind of ideas are you guys talking about?
There's several different options that we're looking at. Uh, number one, we're gonna sit down with MWRD to see what options are there, um, to send more water their way. Um, the other options would be either storage or additional treatment down at Devon. Uh, the other option that we're looking at is sending additional flow down to Bittersweet. Um, those all have costs. We don't have the detail of what those costs are at this time, but it would make sense to get into more of that detail, and hopefully from there, we'll be able to find out what the best solution is to resolve the, the issue.
Um, can you, can you elaborate at all why Streamwood or Hanover Park or several other communities don't need an excess flow facility?
Yeah, the way they were set up, um, I don't believe, well, Streamwood is 100% in MWRD, so, um, they discharge to the treatment plant that MWRD, uh, owns and operates. Um, Hanover Park, I, they have their own facility for the DuPage portion, and then they send everything to MWRD. Back in the 70s, um, the village and MWRD had an agreement. We had this excess, or, well, we had our old treatment plant, and we were building Bittersweet at the time, and, uh, we turned, uh, the Devon plant into an excess flow facility because MWRD has a restriction on, um, well, you would consider normal base flow from every service that comes into the sewer, um, and then they allow 1.5 times that during excess flow, basically rain events. Um, so they put that restrictor at that 1.5, um, and anything above and beyond that goes down to Devon. Um, that's what, we're gonna talk to them to find out, can we change that 1.5 to something larger? Um, we believe they have capacity, but, um, as of right now, there, I've talked to them, and they've said no, because, um, they have restrictions with, like Streamwood, they're monitoring how much excess flow they have, and that's part of our program with our sewer lining program. We're trying to get rid of that excess flow. Um, we'll have to get into the services and all that to help, uh, further, but I think it's going to greatly improve that situation, but we're still gonna have that situation, so we need to find out what the best solution is.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions? Is there still a, do you still like to have a straw, a straw vote?
Straw poll, just, we don't see the sewer thing until it comes up again when Dan's got more information about it.
Just to be clear, we're not gonna raise sewer rates until a rate study is done, correct?
No.
We're not gonna talk about a rate increase until a rate study is done. Is that my understanding?
Wait, until, until what?
No, I think we're still looking at a rate increase, possibly the beginning of 2017.
Water and sewer in the fall, talk about it in the fall, and probably implement it in January. I think if we can get the time schedule that we would like from, uh, the IEPA on this, uh, excursion facility, it's probably three years. We want a year to plan, uh, a year to design, and a year to implement, so we will be moving forward before that.
I would definitely disagree with any kind of rate increases on the sewer until a rate study is done. The last time a rate study was done was what year?
20, well, we did a rate increase in 2012, right?
We did a rate increase, but an actual study to determine what rate should be between the different counties, because right now, a DuPage resident actually pays quite a bit more on their sewer bills because there's a treatment facility. So, I wanna make sure that a DuPage resident is not overpaying for their sewer fees, because that would be bad, so.
I think if we were gonna do a rate increase, I think we would be looking at keeping that same ratio of what the rate is now. We're just, if it was whatever percent, if it's two, three, whatever that percent is, it would go to both the, the Cook County rate and the DuPage rate. It would go up that same percentage across the board.
So what year was the rate study done?
I believe it was in the 90s. Was when they did a thorough evaluation of far as Cook County, DuPage County rates.
Ninety.
Early.
Ninety-three, you think?
Ninety-three.
Early 90s.
How much has changed over at that Bittersweet treatment facility since 93?
Actually, not a lot. Um.
Not a lot?
Not a, as far as improvements, we haven't done a whole lot. As you've seen, the capital, we're looking at, uh, needing to do improvements out there, but there hasn't been a, a lot of changes out at that facility.
So if we were gonna do a straw vote, it'd be simply to, to decide or to ask whether we are approving the, uh, the sewer rate study?
We don't want to discuss it anymore until after we find out what this cost is gonna be for the IEPA, yeah.
Because I certainly am not looking at that very positively.
I, I, I do not want to discuss it any longer until we find out what the costs are for IPA.
Okay. Yeah, I don't either, so I'm good with that.
I'm okay with it, as long as there's not a rate increase until a rate study is done.
That's another discussion.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Committee of the Whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Carbonaro, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's? Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.